So, we have the final budget for the public hearing. And just to go through the process from where we started to date, we had going into the budget, we had a four and a half million dollar gap in the beginning. We whittled it down and whittled it down to where when we had the governor's run, it was eight hundred thousand dollars that we still had to fund the gap. In our revenues, we have property taxes going up two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. As you know, in eighteen, nineteen, in the current year, there was a zero percent tax increase due to the tax cap formula. We were, this two hundred and five thousand dollars is the max that we were able to increase the tax levy for nineteen, twenty. Pilots are up slightly. The largest pilot that we have is nine mile one and nine mile two. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty is going to be our last year for the pilot. We're going to have sixteen million dollars generated from that. We are going into negotiations over this, starting over the summer for that. State aid, the gap has been filled by an additional two million dollars in state aid. This is from a lot of work from our legislators. We received a two percent increase in state aid from the governor's run. And the legislation, legislators run enabled us to get another two million dollars. We are still short in our funding of state aid to the tune of sixteen million dollars. The legislators know that. They're trying to funnel more information to small city school districts like us. Other revenue is up slightly. This could be auction revenue, Medicaid revenue, and reimbursements from health insurance. So, and then fund balance, we are not using any fund balance or reserves to balance this budget. As you know, the superintendent's goal has been to have a revenue-based budget without the use of reserves. So, our total budget is eighty-six million, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, up one point nine million dollars. A regular rollover budget would be in excess of three percent. This budget is two percent, which is a small increase on a small city school district of our size.
Nancy, did you say that, excuse me, did you say that this nineteen, twenty was the last year for the pilot with the new?
Correct.
Okay, so we're gonna go into negotiation with them this summer, late summer. What happens next year if there's no resolution before next year?
Well, then we have to do some very creative accounting in terms of if we go into the budget without a settled pilot, then the nuclear power plants go back on the tax rolls. And we have to use that number in order to calculate both our tax cap and our state aid and pilots going forward.
But if they're still in negotiation, when it comes time for us to put our budget together, they won't be on the tax roll yet, because they'll still be negotiating.
If we don't have a pilot, which the pilot will expire in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, they go on the tax rolls. So, they will, the tax assessors will be having that conversation in March?
Okay, so they would go on the, I guess what I'm trying to get at, they would go on the tax roll even though they're still in negotiation?
Correct, correct.
Couldn't they then appeal their assessment? And so you still don't have a real number, weren't they?
No, we won't have a real number. So, in the last negotiations, we, the same thing happened. The nuclear power plants went on the tax rolls. And we use, and we had, I think it was twenty-five million dollars from them, it generated. So that when we settled the pilot, they included that year as part of the pilot going forward, which in essence reduced our payments down the road.
So, they made part of their pilot retro to the time that they went to full assessment?
That is correct.
So, all the money that we did get went away. We had to take it back out of our pocket again to?
Well, they, no, so we didn't have to give the money back. So, the twenty-five million was used though as an average of the six years. So that we thought that the money going forward prospectively would be a larger amount. But because we included the one year when the nuclear power plants were on the tax rolls, it lowered what we were getting in the five subsequent years.
Because of that one moment where they continued to negotiate their space, the state recognized, they chose that time to recognize the assessment.
And that's all timing, actually. So, every year, we do our budget in a three-part component format. We have the capital budget, which is principal and interest on debt and facilities and maintenance. Our administrative budget, which is the board, superintendent, business and finance, personnel, technology. And a large part of it is the BOSI's administrative budget. And program is all of our instructional budget. So, the administrative budget, salaries have gone up slightly, seventy-six thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Salaries to note were reduced by three administrative interns in this budget. Equipment has increased by thirty-five thousand dollars. And that is for technology equipment, which I will get to later, for cameras and network video recording system that we have to replace. Contractual is down twenty-one thousand. BOSI's is up three hundred and sixty thousand. The largest part of this, as I said before, is the BOSI's administrative budget. And supplies is up slightly. So, overall, our administrative budget is up four hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Any questions on that? Facilities and maintenance, our salaries are up forty-eight thousand, one hundred and six dollars. This is not only for custodians, but it is also for building and ground staff. Equipment is up forty-nine thousand dollars. And that is to purchase a dump truck for the building and grounds. Contractual is down. And this is because we have a reduction in our telecommunication coaster and also a reduction in our utilities, which is from the sale of the ed center. BOSI's is up slightly at eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. And supplies are up nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. So, the total building and maintenance budget is up thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars over last year. The other part of the capital budget is the debt service. Debt service, our building debt service is down five hundred and thirty-two thousand, forty-eight dollars. The biggest part of this is the loss of our energy performance contract. Something to note is in the following year's budget, we already have two more bonding that is falling off for that year. And we have our bus debt service, which is down eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I will be talking more about our bus proposition later on in the PowerPoint presentation. So, our total capital budget, year over year, is down five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. Next is our instructional program budget, which is the largest piece of our budget. So, as you saw in the preceding revenue slide, where we got the additional two point two million dollars in our state aid, the majority of that went to programming. Salaries are up one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. This is because we've added new positions and also with contractual rate increases. I will be going over all of the position additions in a few more slides. Equipment is down sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. In this budget, we could not fund the equipment replacement that we had started in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We hope to add that back in the future. Contractual is up five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is for, the majority of this increase is for private placements for students with disabilities. Our BOSI's budget is up three hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. This is due to PTEC, our PTEC program, and also the Reading League program, which is the county initiative reading program that we're going to do a lot of professional development for with BOSI's this year. And supplies is down slightly at seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. So, the year-over-year increase is two point one million dollars in our instructional budget. The next slide is district benefits. ERS and TRS, this stands for the Employee Retirement System. The Teacher Retirement System is down three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. While ERS went up point one percent, TRS went from ten point six-three percent to eight point eight-six percent. And that's where we're seeing the savings in the budget. Health insurance, we kept flat at fourteen point three million dollars. I'm sure that all of you, you know, and you've heard me say in other presentations that we are self-insured. We are looking at our health insurance annually to cost out the claims, make sure that we're getting our best pricing. And we did cut money from the health insurance. It's always a gamble because we're self-insured. But our trends are telling us that we can leave that flat for next year.
Are we trending this year, Nancy?
Actually, we're not trending very well this year. We've had three high-cost claims. So, where we were able to, where in the past three years, we were doing really well with health insurance. This year, I think it would be less than five hundred thousand dollars, if that, at the end of the year, that we would be under budget. Workers' comp compensation is also flat at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Social Security and Medicare is up slightly. And our Medicare Part B is up two hundred thousand dollars. And that is due to rate increases. Other benefits are down slightly. That could include our dental and our vision plans. So, our total program budget, which includes the benefits and the instructional component, is up two million dollars over last year.
Is unemployment, unemployment insurance in here somewhere?
That's the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we are self-insured, Sam, for unemployment, so we pay claims.
Yeah, but the, but the workers' comp, is that, that part of the health insurance?
The, no. The workers' compensation, the unemployment is in other. It's not a really large piece that we have.
When people retire from this district, are they eligible for unemployment?
No, because they're retired.
Only if they are excess, you're on their own?
Right, and then there is also, we have a third party that reviews all of our unemployment claims. And there are hearings that Dr. Sweeney attends.
Would they, they wouldn't necessarily be allowed to strive for that if they left on their own?
So, oddly, it depends on why you left. So, if you left because maybe your spouse had to relocate, you would be eligible. Or if you left for a higher, if you could show proof that you left for maybe a higher pay. But we go through every single claim, Mrs. Rell and I, where you would make sure that if somebody were to get unemployment, that it's accurate. And Decroot is the company that helps us. So, we talk to them constantly about.
So, you have a source?
Yes.
So, unemployment is, there's not a lot of claims. And that is under other?
Yes. So, the complete administrative budget is up four hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Capital budget is down five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. And our program budget is up two million, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, one point nine million dollars, which you see is the same as our increase in our revenue. Staff additions, there are two elementary teachers that are going to be needed, one for Kingsford Park and one for Riley. There is going to be a reading teacher added to Kingsford Park. Originally, it was going to be a point five E and L teacher. And after looking at the numbers, it was decided that there were not enough students for the E and L program that we could service them. But because of the reading initiative from the superintendent, that we're adding a reading teacher at Kingsford. We're also adding a reading teacher, a point five at Meneto and a point five at Layton. A point five PE teacher at Kingsford Park and a point five PE teacher at Riley. This will have all four elementary schools, Kingsford, Riley, Fitchuah, and Meneto, all at one point five. Layton will stay at one point oh.
Were we able to resolve the Layton issue, give them?
In terms of scheduling? It was going to be for this year going forward. Other staff additions, there's going to be a reading teacher added at the middle school. A special ed coach, CSE chair, that is district-wide. This is to help alleviate the special programs director, who is currently chairing all of the CSE meetings and for some extra help in, and I'm not sure what grade level the special ed coach is going to be. But I'm sure that we're gonna have a meeting on that soon. There are going to be four program teaching assistants added. This is going to be, to be determined. It's based on students' IEPs, on students that are coming in. There is going to be a ten-month, five-hour typist for the counseling attendance office at the middle school. This is part of their school improvement plan. And it is to help with absenteeism and the student flow of traffic through that office. There's going to be a point five library clerk added to the middle school. And there's also going to be a counselor that is going to be added for the elementary schools. The super and I, as we've been going to our meetings, have been fielding a lot of questions on where this position's going to land. That hasn't been decided, whether it's going to be a split person, split position, or if it's going to be included as in one specific school. We're going to be having meetings on that to determine where the greatest need is. We're also adding a seven, twelve foreign language team leader for the middle school and the high school. Other program additions, we're adding a Bridges slot at the high school. They asked for five, we were able to give them one. This is a behavioral program. Can you hear me? Is it disallowed? Can you hear? Okay, so there, we're adding a Bridges slot, which is a behavioral alternative program in a high school setting. The high school did request five slots, we're able to provide them one. Five additional. We are adding two half-day credit accrual slots. This is for the credit recovery program that is run through city, that is held at Suni Oswego. And we're adding money in for middle school intramurals, for the middle school. Other curriculum additions, we are adding equipment for the music department. We did meet with the music department and to, our instruments have not been replaced in a very, very long time. I met with Mr. Dumas. And to replace all of our aging instruments, it would be in the millions. Our repair costs have been increasing year to year to year. And we really need to start a cyclical replacement for our instruments.
Nancy, was there already a line of our equipment? And this, so this was an update, an increase to the equipment line?
This is actually for equipment replacement. They have a budget line for repairs, for string repairs and instrument repairs. But they really haven't had an equipment replacement line in a long time. There's going to be an increase in the arts and ed budget. This is for enrichment programs. I had mentioned in one of the previous slides that equipment for technology is going to be increased. We have, currently, we have cameras and an NVR, which is a network video recorder that is very costly to replace. We started to replace all of our cameras five years ago. And now we're finding out that after five years, they've lived their useful life. And we're starting to replace those along with some of the older cameras that we have in the district. And for facilities, we're purchasing a dump truck. Yes, the cameras are safety-related. We're actually looking at part of our Smart Schools Bond Act money, which Jamie is in charge of that, to add additional cameras in our schools where the principals have met with Jamie and with facilities to determine where there's a greater need for the cameras. So, the tax impact on a hundred thousand dollar home is an increase of fourteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Tax rate would be twenty dollars and sixty cents. This is just an estimate. As the things that can affect the tax rate are the tax rolls that we won't get until July and also the equalization rates. Currently, our tax rate is twenty dollars and forty-six cents. So, the propositions that will be on the ballot, shall the Board of Education adopt a budget for the Oswego City School District in the amount of eighty-six million, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars for this fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and nineteen? Proposition number two, I'm not going to read. I will just explain it. So, this is to purchase nine buses in the amount of nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Five of them are diesel buses, four of them are gasoline buses. Gasoline buses, we're actually going to start trying them out. Gasoline buses are less expensive by five thousand dollars each. They're easier to operate in the winter. So, with a diesel bus, you actually have to warm them up for a while to make sure that the diesel fuel is flowing through the engine. And there's actually less maintenance on gasoline buses. We know that the, this almost didn't pass last year, even though the budget passed with about a sixty percent margin. But this is really, it's really an important thing. Because if we can keep within our bus replacement plan, we can keep up our warranties for the buses that we currently have that we're taking out of service, which is if we had initially thought ten, we might go to nine, because we might repurpose one of those buses for technology or one of the vans for technology. But this, this resolution helps us keep our buses in tip-top condition. We only have three maintenance workers working on a fleet of sixty-six buses. So, it's, the ratio of bus to mechanic is large. And as long as we can keep them in the warranty stage, we're doing really good.
Nancy, I haven't had to answer this question for the last years tonight. Let's real quick, I didn't say anything, I need information, I'm looking for it. But I've been through several times, we talked about this, a couple of our question workshop, about the replacement plan, how much bus, bus actually does cost to attach there. And I was hoping that when this thing all goes public, that information's up, people need to know how much state aid is on the buses, what the resale value is, you can kind of estimate that. And so what the bus actually does cost there.
That's a really good point, Sam. So, we receive eighty-six percent state aid on our buses. So, if you think about it, we're only paying sixteen percent of local share on a bus.
Right, good. But what Sam's saying is what I was gonna say, where can we put this on here?
It could be in the store.
It should, right.
And that may be a reason.
How do we put it underneath the proposition?
I would say that what we want to do is we want to push it to say that it's a strategic decision by the admin and the board to choose to purchase buses. The reason is, is that the state will aid us in eighty-four percent or eighty-six percent of a bus. But they will not help us pay for parts. They will not help us pay for an employee. And because we have chosen this strategic method of replacing a bus, we are allowed the ability to only have three maintenance men work on sixty-seven buses. So, we've reduced our overhead as much as we possibly can while using the state's money the best way possible.
And I understand what you're saying. That should be part of our newsletter presentation. It's too late for this year, but.
These already went to print.
We talked about this multiple times.
Right, about putting it in.
Something has to get out to the people.
And I think the other part too, we, I don't remember who brought it up, but this fact that, having, remember, we talked about it in our meeting last night, that, you know, people question the fact as to why do I see all these buses that are half-empty? We talked about that in the meeting, so go into it, to push that. The knowledge out there that we're mandated to have enough buses if there was an emergency to get the kids to another place. And that's something that people know about or talk about. I mean, they're just gonna look at, why are the buses half-empty? I mean, why are we buying buses everywhere here? So, I.
We can, we can see if we can.
Relations to the, to that.
Well, it would've been good. We did it last night.
That's obviously not happening, so you need to do it. We're in a problem now. And I also think it's important to be able to know that you turn around and offer the old buses. That's crazy.
No, Nancy said. So, what I think we can do is we can reach out to BOSI's. These were printed ahead of time. We can see if we can reach out to them and stop the process and get that information in the budget newsletter. It's not too late. We will also, I will have JB put it on our website and highlight that aspect as well. The other part to our buses to. The other part to our buses too, is that we do some creative financing where when we buy the buses, we usually don't buy them till next fiscal year because they're actually being made as we speak.
Yeah, they go to that bit.
So what we do is the debt for the principal interest, we won't be paying that until the following year, which will be, then we'll be able to tie our state aid to our debt.
I mean, if you, if you shorten Dean's letter and put something, but really highlight it in that bottom, and I think there's a spot.
We can, we'll fit it in.
So you're highlighting nine-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars isn't the actual, that's the cost? That's what paying for these nine buses before state aid.
That's correct. Because that's what we're buying for.
So this proposition doesn't have the real numbers that the taxpayers.
But that's, yeah.
But that's what, that's what we bought for. So the nine-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars, we don't have nine-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars in the bank to buy the buses. So we actually go out and bond for that. That's what the board, or that's what the resolution was saying, is that we have the authority to borrow nine-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars to pay for the buses.
Well, maybe next week we could put the number of what we're going to be giving back from the state. You know what I'm saying? I think that probably.
No, it can't be in the proposition. We tried, we talked about that.
Or maybe in the explanation of all the other stuff that we're saying.
In that, but not the proposition. The proposition is very specific. Because we were trying to figure out how to let the voters know.
The proposition is created by our, our legal department. Each one is reviewed and vetted by them and we put exactly what we have to in order to make sure that we, it's legal.
So maybe we could just in that other section where we're going to add the information we talked about, have that number now. Yeah, this is what we're bonding for, but this is how much money we're getting back from state aid. I think that's going to resonate.
That and if we can also include the part that you're referring to in terms of what goes to auction. I think Dean had mentioned it last night, between fourteen and forty thousand dollars per bus. That is potentially that we're going to get there. So it looks more as a net, what the net cost is as opposed to, you know, in, in the, the marketing aspect of it, in when we show them, explain the whole.
Well, that might be a little difficult because when we do auction our buses and we get, because we take such good care of it, we really get top dollar for our buses. People buy our buses before anyone else's. And when we do that, we used to trade them in and we were only getting a thousand dollars per bus on a trading. Now we're getting anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars a bus. The difficulty is that when we get the money from auction on the bus, because we bonded for them, it's actually a deduct from our state aid.
So it's not additional too?
Oh, so you can't put that in the equation?
So, but we're still making out that, but they want the money back because if they, what the state is saying is we've aided you on this, but now you're selling them and you're getting a profit for them, so we want a piece of that back.
No, they're, I remember two years ago, we, we crafted a new route for our buses where we'd saved almost forty-four thousand dollars. So the next year, they took forty-two thousand dollars worth of funding away because of our, to save, we saved on fuel.
Right.
To save on fuel, but so they took it away.
Any efficiencies that we, we do, someone else has done that.
Well, here we are using the state.
The third proposition is authorizing the annual appropriation for the public library of one-point-three million dollars. And they also have two trustees that are going to be voting in for five-year terms. It's important to know that the library budget is not part of the school district budget. We have no control over the library budget, but we do aid in collecting their taxes for them.
Nancy, does the library have to do a budget presentation to the community?
Not that I'm aware of. So our voting places have not changed. Scriber Fire Station in St. Paul's for District One and Two, Eland Grace for District Three and Oswego Town Hall for District Four. And our budget vote will be on May the twenty-first.
Can I, can I just put in maybe a suggestion or a request that in the future, when these type of things go out, I mean, has the Board of Education here, that we can keep going before they go to term?
Thank you, Nancy.
And at this time, if anyone has any questions, they're more than welcome to come up to the microphone and just state their name and address.
Chair, why not? Hi, my name is Jim McKenzie, I'm from the town of Oswego. I'd just like to actually lend my support to budget. I've been paying attention as much as I can, being, not being on the board, asking questions, coming to meetings when available. And I really appreciate the fact that you're looking to reduce class sizes. I think it's something that's necessary. I think physical education is an important part. I've heard at the open budget workshop, a number of you spoke about phys ed and I think that's very important and I thank you about that too. And also the mental health of our students. As you all well know and as I've spoken about here before, there's something different in the last ten to fifteen years that we haven't seen in the population of our children. And a lot of it, we can't help, but, because they're sometimes home-based. But the fact that you're trying to look to include more mental health, more counselors, I think that's a good step. So I thank you for all your work and I just ask that you please continue along those lines in future budgets. I know you can't do everything at one time, but I think these are worthwhile goals to work towards, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Would there be any other questions? At this time, could I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All neighbors?
Aye, aye.
Of course, you may adjourn.